Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, May 12, 2022. Time is now 7:01 PM. First item on the agenda was the reorganization. We are missing two of our members, I believe, and congratulations for your reelection, Aaron.
Thank you.
And to Megan.
Congratulations, Megan.
Election to the board.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And I think we'll do a roll call vote because we have a remote participant and we are on a remote meeting.
Sure.
Aaron.
And I make a motion if we need one to do the reorganization when we have a full board.
I'm gonna second that. Do we need to do anything with that?
We don't need that. That's under discussion. But if we just go around.
Just say up here.
Say, Naaman.
Yeah, Aaron Sokrat, here.
Mike Greco, here.
Mike Zwicker, here.
Ms. Schlesman, here.
Tracy Sharkey, aye. Okay, thank you. So Mr. Marx and Mr. Schultzberg are absent. Citizens Forum, call for public comment. Anyone here under that item? Seeing none.
No request in advance either.
Okay. A and Rs, 21 and 25 Orange Street, 2022-03, possible votes.
Madam Chair, this A and R is a pretty straightforward land swap of existing properties. They're trading 13,000 square feet on the plan of parcel A with parcel B, trading ownership. Very straightforward. It has conforming frontage in both lots. The only question for the board is, is Orange Street considered a navigable way in the board's opinion? Other than that, I didn't see any issues here. You guys know Orange Street better than I do.
It's a little rough. Is anyone here presenting for this?
I am.
Oh, hi.
How are you?
Good. Name an address. Name an address, please. Name an address for.
Yes.
Sir, could you do?
The drawings on the back.
Name the address for the record.
I'm sorry.
What is your name and your address?
I own KTR Enterprises, which owns the properties.
Okay. And do you believe that Orange Street is navigable with grade and construction?
Of course.
Okay. Board members, do we have any questions?
So we're doing what, swapping A and B?
Turning ownership.
So that was more of a side setback for the house.
What are you going to do?
What are you going here? You making this here part of the C L lot?
Exactly right.
For a setback purposes?
No, no, we're putting a garage in.
Okay.
So you got the garage allows a 25-foot setback around all sides.
Okay.
So are we, if I, through the chair, I ask, parcel A, is that being conveyed to the one that says lot area 192, 192,000? Are you doing that so you can get a garage in that pocket? Is that what you, I don't understand. Which is going where of these?
The pockets going to the 4.43 acre lot. And the back pipe piece is going to the 2.8 acre lot.
Right, so that you have room to the left of that house if, right, right, to do a garage or something. That makes sense and that's, I would do that.
Yeah, with the common ownership lines you have there.
Right, right, that's cool. I got no issue with it.
I see no problem.
I'll entertain a motion.
Like to make the motion to approve the A and R as presented.
And endorse.
Endorse.
And endorsed. Before us.
Motion made by Mr. Sokrat.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Zwicker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do by roll call?
Roll call. Yeah, Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Ms. Schlesman, aye.
Great.
Thank you. So we'll have that sign, you can pick it up from that. Thank you.
It'll be ready in the morning tomorrow.
Good night.
Good night.
Next item, 280 U Street, 2022-04.
Madam Chair, this project, brief introduction, is the creation of a proposed lot, 365,900 square feet, about 8.4 acres, off of a larger parcel that will be remaining with 38.6 acres, conformance with the lot size and frontage requirement. U Street's public wave variable width, I have no problems here. I believe that someone is here to speak on that, if necessary.
Name and address, please.
Margaret Bacon, Civil Site Engineering, and I'm here representing Evan Pedro here regarding the A and R plan for 280 U Street. Basically, the subdivision from a, as Matt said, a 46-acre parcel into a smaller 8-acre parcel.
Okay. Board, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Motion to endorse A and R plan for 280 U Street.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Sokrat. All those in favor, roll call.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Ms. Schlesman, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can pick up the sign, Mylar?
Yes.
In the morning.
The morning.
In the morning.
More morning?
Yep. The registry is cold, closed, so can't bring it up there now.
Right now, yeah. Good luck, you guys.
Thanks.
Next, A and R, 772 Northwest Main Street, 2022-05.
Yep. Just through the chair, I want to ask, Ms. Schlesman, she intends on recusing herself from this matter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, so for the record, Ms. Schlesman is accused.
Yes. So this is a, the engineer is here. Mr. Gopman is here to speak on this, but ultimately, this is a lot line correction. There was a little bit of a zigzagging line that included some chapter land, so the lot line correction is to eliminate that problem and keep all the chapter land on one side of the line.
Drew Gopman, OHI, and I couldn't have said it better, Matt. It's pretty easy. Those two pieces that, from that lot three, that project into the chapter 61, that Ms. Schlesman is going to be removing before she is able to sell the other lots, but we were removing the two little triangles that considered, they were in the chapter 61, so we're removing them so she can sell that lot, the existing lot. Pretty basic.
Okay.
It's a bit of housekeeping, I guess?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to accept this A and R as submitted before us for what is deemed as 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street Cooperstown Realty.
And endorse.
And endorsed as well. Thank you.
A motion made by Mr. Sokrat, seconded by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I.
Roll call.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye. And Ms. Schlesman, if you can say abstain or?
Abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And public hearing, 7:00 PM. Public hearing continued from April 28, 2022. CRG Services Management LLC, application for site plan review, 105 and 123 Goboa Street and 470 Northeast Main Street, possible votes. Hi.
Good evening. Todd Moore, Beals Associates, Park Plaza, Suite 100, Boston, Mass. Frank Pacudas from CRG is with me on Zoom this evening, as is Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates, our traffic consultant.
Okay, great.
I can put a site plan up there. I don't have a long presentation. I think we're.
We've seen it.
Yeah.
We know it well.
It's pretty much there. So we, just to bring you up to speed, we have gotten three peer review letters, one regarding traffic, one regarding wetlands, and one regarding, I'll just refer to it as general site, I think it was zoning sites, or zoning engineering storm. So the traffic, all three have been responded to, back to VSC. The traffic peer reviewer has come back with his response letter. I have a copy over here, but it basically just signed off on every single one. They agree with anything. So I would consider the traffic to be pretty much closed. The wetlands peer review, we'll probably be discussing Monday night when we're with the Conservation Commission and the status of that. I think, based on my conversations with the peer reviewer this afternoon, he seems fairly satisfied with what we've had to say. He hasn't gone through the letter completely yet, but he is gonna work on it, hopefully have a little bit more input coming in. I know he's got a very busy schedule over the next several days. And then the site, overall site, that was a little bit longer peer review. It brought up things regarding zoning, things regarding stormwater, and things regarding just general site engineering. I did see, well, he wasn't on here. Oh, there he is. Yep, he's still on here. Dominic Rinaldi from VSC is here, the author of that letter. Again, we had a discussion this afternoon regarding that. I highlighted a couple of items that I wanted him to make sure he took a look at in our response that were a little bit longer than just a yes, we agree, or no, we don't agree. So I did have some fairly lengthy responses on, I think, three items that I wanted him to take a look at, make sure he was okay with, before we made any kind of presentation that we responded to them adequately. So that's kind of where we stand.
Okay, and all the plans have been up to date with any changes that you've agreed on, so we should be good to button this up?
Yeah, so let me just talk, I talked to Matthew about this a little bit, and one of the ways I'm proposing to do this with this plan set, so this is a, this plan set's about 80 sheets. It's thick. So usually when we have plan sets this thick and we're in front of multiple boards in towns, we try to do what's called a control document set, which means that by the time we get done with, you folks, the plan, Conservation Commission, actually, those are the only two words here. But by the time we're done with you folks, there's one set of plans floating around town all instead of inserted sheets.
Right.
And everybody gets confused.
Good point.
Especially with 80 sheets. So what we'd like to do is, we've committed to making various changes, not only in public hearing, but also in these letters that we've sent back to VSC. What I'd like to do is just make sure that we get satisfied with you folks, satisfied with Conservation Commission, and then submit one final set of control documents.
Makes sense.
That that's gotta come in, and that's your record of what's been done. That way, as the project moves into a building permit phase, into a construction phase, you folks are all working off of, and the rest of town staffs, all working off the same set of documents. So everybody knows what's supposed to be going on.
So when do you anticipate having that control document?
We can have that within a week.
Okay, so after conservation?
Yep.
And we agree, so I think for this board, for Planning Board, we've agreed with the peer review and agreed with all the changes that they requested.
We still have a couple of little things.
Okay.
And our consultant is here.
Then let's, let's tell them now.
Yeah, so through the chair. I've never heard a response back. We mentioned about the Tri-Town project, because you guys were talking about North Street Bridge and doing things, and we said to look at the Tri-Town building and see what was already being done in collaboration with what you were thinking of doing. What's the response on that?
May I? Through the chair, I did provide Mr. Moore with the draft decision, or with the decision for that project, and they're gonna be forming their draft based on the conditions of that approval. So the information's there, at least it's been provided. I just wanted to say that, that's all.
And then also on that Tri-Town, also, we had a trigger mechanism in that project where they, for two years, were gonna do a traffic count to see about the effects of that project on the Town of Douglas. So that's in that report. So now, and we knew that possibly at some point in time, another project would be coming in on the same road. Has there been any cooperation or thinking of doing the same thing? Because right now, the Town of Douglas has no trigger for increasing traffic, but on the other project, we do. With two projects going on in two major warehouses, whose stuff is whose? And they were setting it up with license ID to know if it's coming out of their warehouse or not. So are we gonna try to do the same thing on this to see what kind of influx can or might be going across the bridge or into town? Or are we just gonna let this one just go? And that's all in that final report prepared on the Tri-Town unit, and that was discussed very heavily and approved by everybody. Everybody agreed to that.
Well, there's also a conflict where there was off-site improvements proposed by the other developer. So we didn't want to collide them or overlap them, and we wanted to make sure that they were collaborating. And also, I think the traffic study would have something in place that is the trigger for the.
There isn't.
Yours.
No, so let me make a suggestion. This, and we run into this actually quite a bit, because a lot of these types of developments are originally designed and proposed on a speculative basis, right? Meaning, we don't know who the town is. Very common, it's very common for these, for us, to have a condition in our approval that within like six months of the certificate of occupancy being granted and the facility going up, we do a traffic count. And we specifically account for everything that's coming out of our driveways, whether they're turning right, turning left, whatever they're doing, we have to account for that. And then often, and this isn't a problem either, we do it again in another six months. So you get a traffic count in six months after occupancy and then a year after occupancy, just to make sure.
So we can put that in the condition?
That can be.
Well, I just wanna make sure that it's covered there, and I forget the verbiage we had there on if it exceeds what?
Yeah, that certain percentage, which was like four vehicles.
That's what they had said, yeah.
Trailer trucks.
The trailers and stuff. So I'd really like to have that all hammered out between the two warehouses, because both of them will have an effect.
Oh, yeah.
Now, it's hard to separate maybe the two, but yet it isn't really in today's technology with the traffic owners.
Yeah, they're doing out their driveway. They don't wanna be blamed.
Yeah, we would do it right at the driveway, so we know exactly what we're contributing to the roadway network. Yeah.
And if it exceeds what kind of number, though, are you gonna put out there, then what happens? Or is it just a?
Well, there would be remediation.
Well, but is that gonna be in writing, or what are we gonna do here?
We'll do the same as we did with the last people.
Right, well, that's what I'm getting at. That's why I'm bringing it up.
And it was proposed.
So I'll have it out.
Yeah, there was proposed remedies on that.
Right, there was.
I'm reading it now.
Okay.
Give a second.
And then how would the, the developer had mentioned the donation. So how is that going to be fashioned in the decision, or is it going to be separate?
This is street improvements.
We have a, no, separate from the street improvements.
Yeah.
Frank, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I think we discussed in the concept of putting that into a developer's agreement.
Okay.
So there's developer's agreement, a template of which was forwarded to the township, and we basically put together something that was seen in different municipalities and suggested that you guys take a first step at it with your township solicitor or whatever legal counsel you choose. And we could basically note that in the developer's agreement, along with any other obligations, right? Because we do have other obligations with respect to us contributing to the Mass Works Grant Program, different off-site improvements that we wanted to memorialize.
The Charles, yeah. The Charles Street sidewalk.
Yep.
Yeah, because someone had suggested, I think there was a consensus for Soldier's Field improvements. So that was, you know, something that would benefit the most amount of people in town, and it's kind of a historical site for the town. So there's some, a couple opportunities for improvements that if we could possibly put a list together as options, that would be nice.
And that could be all incorporated into the drafts that go back and forth between CRG.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Nope, through the chair. On that other project, that was done with CMRBC present at every meeting. So that was a big deal on doing that Tri-Town. Learned a lot.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were the mediators.
Mediator on all of it, and overseeing a lot of it, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Between the three.
Yeah.
It's a regional project.
So Madam Chair, I mean, so the road improvements, and maybe it's also for Bob and Eric, that there's gonna be road work on there and the piping and drainage and sewage and put under the ground. It would go through construction on Goboa Street. And so is that anything dovetailing between these two developments?
Yeah.
Can we, can you kind of briefly give us an office of how?
Street is being, gonna be affected.
Well, I, yeah, I think there's a, there's a separate infrastructure project going on, this new water, new sewer.
Yep.
And a gas line, too, I believe. And, you know, my understanding is that's, that's happening whether we're here or not.
Right, right.
And conversely, even if that didn't happen, we'd still be looking to do this project because there is currently water and sewer in the street, gas would just work off of it. It'll probably be a pretty large propane tank farm, it would be a propane tank farm on the site. So we've been cordial, we have been in communication with the design team on that project, just to make sure that we're in sync. So they had our drawings, we had their drawings, just to make sure that the designs do align. As far as the construction sequencing, you know, once we get through this entitlement stage, get the building permits going, and can get the construction teams together, we can work on it as far as that goes, too.
Okay.
Once we get to the superficial end of it, everything gets buttoned up, we do have that left turn lane that we're gonna be putting in and some re-striping as you come around that corner to go up the hill. It'll fit within the current pavement widths, but obviously, everything's gonna be torn apart there and everything's gonna be repaved there, so we'll have to go in and stripe that.
So if I may continue with a separate topic, but all tied in, is that your egress of the trucks leaving the facility, the tractor-trailers, are encouraged, not only encouraged, but physically encouraged to take a right coming out towards 146? Is that gonna be in the, in the form of some sort of a rumble right turn where if they decided to take that left, they would have to encroach on a island, or how is that designed?
If they tried to take a left out of there, it would probably result in them doing about a three-point turn, because they, they can't make that movement.
Correct.
That's what we're hoping. Designed it so they can only go to the right.
Good.
We've got sign, we'll have signage on the site as well, and drivers will be instructed.
Right, I mean, I heard about this in this campaign, a lot of people coming up to me and concerned about that, and they had heard that you guys were encouraging, and this is what we wanna hear, so.
Yeah, and quite frankly, these are, these are national long-haul truckers, right? So they, they don't wanna be going through your downtown.
Well.
As nice as your downtown may be.
Mike says otherwise.
Yeah, well.
We see it.
It just, it just.
Set on the main.
We have the best pizza, you know?
Lot of options.
Don't be saying that, because now you're gonna get those trucks all excited about your pizza.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
So those are a couple things to work on. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this hearing? Seeing none, so are we ready for the next meeting, May 26, at 7:00 PM?
Madam Chair, I have one item to ask, just to follow from a previous meeting. You guys mentioned doing a noise study, and I forgot to bring that up earlier today.
Yeah.
That had come up. And I mean, I see this as a.
You had a couple things in.
There was a noise and a lighting thing, but I see those both as potential conditions of approval, which is fine.
The lighting, I think we've taken care of. There were, I think there were two comments that VSC had made about the lighting. One was at the intersection of a driveway and Goboa Street, and they properly pointed out, I think we had some lights bill over, a couple tenths of foot candles. I don't see that as a problem when you're at an intersection on a public street. I think you. The other one was on the emergency access.
Right.
And not having lights bill over there, and I think since it's an emergency access driveway, I think that's a problem.
Good, okay. I'd just wanted to mention them just for the sake of the meeting, Madam Chair, and that being, those can be two things as conditions, that the noise study be provided to us.
That you had preliminary results the last meeting, and then you're waiting for.
We're waiting for the.
And now, yeah, okay.
There's a really nice condition in the other draft approval for the other warehouse pursuant to lighting, and, I mean, there's a lot of this stuff can carry over.
Yeah.
And to Mr. Zwicker's point, the one about the, about the additional traffic counts and studies in here, too, it's very verbose, it's very good.
Quite frankly, I saw that, and I, that other decision, I think a lot of that's gonna overlap.
Yeah, two other towns looked at it, too, and added all this stuff in, so it was a problem.
Be nice to hang on to some of that stuff, or even in the future.
You will, yeah. It's a record, yeah.
Can you tell me which of those were the Douglas-only ones?
No, we cannot. We cannot, no.
So I'll just.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, we have audience, basically.
I already asked, there's none.
You all set, Bob?
Did you want to have your consultant at all for anything?
No, I think I'd rather wait for the rest of the board members. Hopefully, there'll be a full board for the vote, and if there's any final questions.
Sure. General sense, Madam Chair, I met with all the applicants and all of our consultants today at a Zoom call at 1:30, and general sense was that everyone's okay with how this sounds.
Yeah.
And the remaining items, I don't wanna speak for our consultant who's in the car patiently waiting, that's, a lot of them were, you know, housekeeping things.
Yeah, and the applicant has agreed to the suggestions.
Am I outpaced with that, Tom, at all?
Nope, no, that was, good evening, Dominic Rinaldi of VSC Group. I am in my car.
I did one in my car today, too.
Yeah, it's, my daughter's on hiring a softball game, so I'm sitting in the parking lot. So, yeah, we met today, it was a good meeting, we have a really thorough response from the design team, and I think next week we'll have our sort of final letter back. If there's anything left, it's gonna be a little housekeeping type tasks, you know, crossing Ts, dotting Is, that type of, type of stuff. So I, if you drive a thorough response with the concept of everything they're doing, I'm more than satisfied, so.
Thank you. Okay.
And through the chairs, I agree, it's just the small stuff, the use of languages, getting in there to protect.
Yeah.
It's, and it's the traffic that I'm being concerned. I mean, the rest of it is awesome, but we're just trying to keep.
And the off-site impacts.
Yeah.
Making sure we don't get in trouble in the future.
Correct. That's all we're trying to do is down the road, a year from now, whatever, something that arises, will we have any trigger mechanism that anything can be done or be held hopeless? And we don't wanna be held hopeless.
Right.
Not knowing who's going in, that's the big thing.
Right.
We have no.
I agree.
So we could reasonably anticipate, hopefully moving towards a vote in the next meeting. We might even have a draft decision ready at that time.
I would, yeah, I would prefer the draft, yeah.
Great.
Since all the, I mean, all the peer review came back and.
Because we could close the hearing and vote on the same night.[1591.74]
We got burnt once by doing that. We'll let them review it all first.
Yeah, and we'll get. No, no, not tonight.
Yeah.
I'm saying, if everything's drafted out and everything is fine, then maybe next meeting we can, if things look like they're supposed to look, so.
All right, I'm going to call to continue to May 26 at 7:00 P.M.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Sokrat. All those in favor, roll call.
Aaron Sokrat, yay.
Mike Ruckoit, Mike Ruckoit, yay.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Ms. Schlesman?
Should be abstaining.
Aye.
Aye.
She's continuing the hearing.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, all right, we'll see you on the 26th. I'll see you on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Aye.
Next item, 7:15 P.M. Public hearing continued from April 28, 2022, Sutton Douglas Development. They have requested a continuance to May 26, 2020, at 7:15 P.M.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sokrat. All those in favor, roll call.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Mike Ruckoit, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Ms. Schlesman, aye.
Okay, thank you. Additional business, open space committee survey announcement. We have something in our pocket.
Chair, would you like me to just read it all out for the record again?
Sure, we already had this in our packet.
We have, and it's just going to get repetitive.
Can everybody please do the survey?
Yes.
When they get home tonight.
It's going to be a lot of that. I'll just shorten it. Please visit the survey link on our www.surveymonkey.com/r/douglasosrp. Participate in the survey if you're Douglas resident. There's a handful of questions. It shouldn't take you more than a couple of minutes, so.
Okay, everybody got that? Thank you very much. Please do the survey, everyone. The fall town meeting, zoning articles for consideration.
Madam Chair, instead of getting too deep into this without two of our members here, I would recommend, or sorry, I'd request that the board consider a motion to just pass this off to other boards and committees for comment, the two items that didn't make it through town meeting, at our last town meeting.
If I can, through the chair, we've already decided on one.
Yeah.
On the solar.
Yep.
So, I mean, there's nothing more to go on than that. We've already decided on this. It was just the writing and the language, the way it was laid out.
Yeah.
That's it.
Right. I was just curious if you wanted to collect feedback, just send it out to everyone, say that you did, then it comes back, you can still push it forward the way you have it. This way, at least it touched all those other different boards and committees in town. Don't have to, it was just a recommendation.
Well, I mean, and through the chair.
The ZBA would be the only one that I would really think that would want to weigh in on the, like, as far as when people apply for special permit or variance, for a variance for height.
For height.
Or Concom as well.
Concom for the solar.
Environmental component.
Do you want to send it to zoning and to conservation? I think those would be the applicable.
It's important, yeah.
And we have a little time. So is this the revised one, or the?
It should be.
Old one.
Oh, you know what, I'm not sure which one, Jim, put in the packet, to be honest with you. That's just the warrant, I apologize.
If we could, if we could do the one that we recommended, yeah.
With the revisions?
Yes, absolutely.
And maybe bring that.
Yes.
Back to us at the next meeting, so we actually have that as a record.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Would we like everyone to look at the building elevation, though? Because the building elevation, we had recommended to take out.
Yeah, we'll stretch them.
The ZBA.
Should we try to, as far as building elevation goes, should we try, and then, should we try to get a clear, more simplified definition?
Yeah.
Of building elevation? No pictures?
No pictures.
Talk to Ken, ask Ken, see what he wants to come up. He has a little bit of time now.
Yeah.
To lay out what all he's looking for, a full-blown explanation.
It almost might be better with words.
Correct.
Because then people can't put their own twist on what the picture looks like.
Correct. So I would think, through the chair, definitely through the building inspector to.
Yeah, so before it goes out to ZBA and Concom.
Yeah, have it come to us, and then go out from there.
Okay. And if I may, through the chair, I can speak with the building inspector, since I deal with this all the time in different towns.
That'd be great.
I mean, it's pretty simple, if it's broken down, you know, in segments and mean grade, it can work just fine.
Let's clarify the definition.
Yeah, we need to clarify.
Because we don't have one right now.
Question?
Yes.
Which of these items are you talking about, Aaron?
The height.
Fall town meeting.
The town meeting.
Town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
Of five.
Say height, yeah, okay.
It was at Article 11 and Article 14, but not as printed on the warrant, this is a copy you have. So we're just looking to get more feedback on the solar bylaw that we had, and the building height and elevation.
Yeah, and I think we can just, you know, maybe zoning board might have an opinion, too, but that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have vertical zoning here, so it's not like it's a thing in this town, so.
We don't need a motion or anything, I'll send it out.
Yeah, thank you.
If I can, through the chair on that, when that was being discussed at town meeting, why wasn't mentioned that anything's better than nothing?
Yeah.
And why wasn't it said, "As per public hearing and the planning board's wishes, this is what they want, not what somebody else wants to wish upon it"? Where, this is the, the amended document was handed in as per the planning board.
Yeah.
So why was that information said that way?
I'm not sure exactly who said what and this and that. All I know is the moderator wasn't taking our amendments because of the calendar. We ran into an odd calendar thing where Thursday was the 31st of March. Our hearing was on the 14th, the warrant was printed on the 14th, and he just didn't want, he's within his power not to take the changes, so.
Well, let's not go down.
That's as far as it went.
That's the past at this point.
So I think everyone agrees we want it to get into the regulation, but the way that the group wants it. So I just wanted to get it right back onto the agenda so we can push it along.
Yeah.
And have it done.
Yeah, along with the other proposed.
Correct.
Warrant. And then we also have, typically, the chair or the vice chair would present the planning board's report for the moderator.
Correct.
Yeah, that was new.
It was prepared ahead of time, and I only did it a couple of times for Ernie, but I know that Ernie, or Mr. Marx, was.
Yeah, that was my first experience with that. I handed them in, obviously, weeks in advance. I didn't know someone had to.
Yeah, physically, yeah.
That was new.
And read it out loud, and.
Right.
And through the chair, when Sutton, and I know the finance had a last-minute meeting, because I watched it.
Yeah.
Would have been nice to have a shout-out to the planning board members, "Hey, does that meeting, this is what went down, and this is what's going on."
We're going to let you know what's going to happen.
So we would have known at the board, "Okay, guys, you need to show up, because it's our deal being presented to the community."
Yeah.
It'd be really nice to know what's going on, even though it might be last minute.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty important.
Oh, I agree. I know what you're saying, and sorry for the open discussion, but.
But on the, we're always in the loop.
I get it. Well, it was, I was ready to present it exactly the way you guys had it, and say, "Here's what you guys should vote on." I wasn't expecting moderator to not accept the changes four hours prior to the meeting.
On the floor.
So I was a little thrown off there, but hey, that's, that's.
It's in the past.
Run town meeting, it's all good. I just want to be ready without any calendar glitches this time, on for next meeting, so.
All right.
And we should think about if we want to add another, another warrant article soon.
There was one that we were.
Well, it's the 55-plus.
Yeah, we've got a few.
The one.
The Economic Development Committee recommended that we remove a piece of the earth removal, which was the 10-foot monitoring well piece. We still got to go over that with water.
Yeah, we recommended reducing that.
Yes, we did.
Yep.
And then.
I have another item that might be financially based, but it's a Route 16 sidewalk project that's gone through town meeting several times. It's a, there's a stretch on, it's kind of near, I don't know how to describe this, between Franklin Street. You guys know the town better than I. It's on that side of the road, comes up the hill, kind of towards Deer Neck of the Woods.
End.
Yeah, and.
Sunset.
Yeah, it's like a.
Sunset's on the left.
It's, yes, yes, thank you. And it's starting to really climb in dollars, more than it was appropriated at a town meeting. So there might be an increased request at a future town meeting, we'll find out. But that sidewalk's starting to become very expensive. But anyway, that's another one.
I mean, it's the amount of people that it would service, so it would be that subdivision only, really.
And then there's Stone Gate should be ready for town meeting at that point.
Okay.
Those two cul-de-sacs, so. But the 55-plus, and this changes to Section 7.2, are things we all talked about, still get that going.
And the.
I have so many written on my chalkboard in my office.
No. Well, let me ask you.
The reduced frontage, the reduced frontage lots.
When do we, when do you need to have, or what date are we shooting for at the office?
We're way ahead right now, so.
The time flies, remember, we only meet once a month.
Let's do August, August.
Okay.
August meeting.
Let's do August, to have everything firmed up.
Okay.
And then if there's any snafus, we have two more meetings probably after that, before the deadline, before the November.
Deadline, before.
Yeah, the meeting.
Before the meeting.
Yeah.
As long as, like you said, you want to be prepared, but summer goes by quick with one meeting a month.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Real quick.
Yeah. Okay, great.
All right.
And if I can, through the chair, how are you doing on monuments?
That's the next thing up, Preservation Park Highway monuments. So we have three bids in our packet.
We do.
We see one winner here.
So I talked, I talked to the town administrator today, and because these are a public road that's already accepted by the town, and it's town meeting funds appropriation, actually don't need the planning board's vote to choose one.
Yeah.
To be done in-house, but all three estimates were actually over the funds that we have.
Okay.
So I have, I sent back to each of these bidders an opportunity to reduce the number of monuments to match the funds that we have. All we have is 12.5, and all of these are over that, so.
Okay.
We'll see how many, who has the most monuments of the three at that point, and then, now, which can I have to say. All we have is that one appropriation.
Through, Madam Chair, I'm not so sure how this finance.
Yeah, it's a little bizarre.
Here we are, all these developments are coming through us. We're trying to improve conditions in the town, whether it be sidewalks, whether it be monuments, to make up in arrears what hasn't done before.
Right.
And we have what would be a lot of new revenue coming to the town. I'm not saying that we should spend it all. We're talking a difference of $4,000 here. How do, what's the mechanism that we could say that, I don't know that we can say, I don't care if it's over our budget, but I'm saying, how do we get that done?
The only way.
Finance committee or what?
Could do it is if we tried to reappropriate something that's currently in our budget, and we already have our planning, community development budget appropriated for certain items.
All right. So a matter of expediency is keep the money, reduce the monuments?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I can, through the chair, that's why we had it set up the way we did.
Yeah.
We had it revolving, that we're there, whenever we got certain funds, they'd go out and do so many monuments.
Right.
We didn't go through waiting months and months and months and all this, and going back and forth. We had it set up as a revolving deal at the meetings to make it very simple, and they were getting, they were getting done. Now everything's kind of run into a stop because of it, which isn't good.
Can we just take?
We didn't appropriate any funds at this meeting, did we?
I don't believe so.
So this is something that is supposed to be on.
Every single meeting.
Every single round meeting.
Okay.
And we had it at a small amount, so, yeah, it might only do four monuments, or five monuments, but they were getting done. Right now, nothing's getting done.
So why don't we reduce the, they're at 5:32 and change. So why don't we reduce, why don't we reduce it to 23 monuments, instead of 28, take five out?
Sure.
Yeah, whatever fits for now.
I think moving forward is better, and I don't, I don't think we're going to find the money. So if they don't come back matching that, because I don't think, I mean, it's hard as it is getting people, getting surveyors right now, so.
Yeah.
Why don't we propose, can you match that with 23?
Okay.
And then they can pick.
Right.
You know, every other on a couple of sections.
Okay.
As long as we're keeping, the main thing is, is keeping track to know what is getting done.
Yeah.
And the ones that we're still have to do.
Yeah. As a record.
Through the chair, so, I mean, I know a little about this, but which town meeting is it that would approve our budget for next year?
Spring.
That we have to go to Finance Committee?
Spring.
So for next year, I think we need to go and produce a substantial increase in the budget of this board, since we are the purveyors of millions of dollars of revenue coming in, that we know best what to do with monies. That should improve things in the town.
Yeah, and the other thing is, I'm not sure, since we own the road right now, it's been accepted, is there additional funds from Highway or some other location to take care of the roadway? And this is part of the taking care of the roadway.
Right.
For the future.
Sure.
Yeah, because we figured, the bonds now, through the chair, they're all figured in now on any project. Nothing's accepted until they're all in.
Yes, yes.
All this is cleaning up stuff from.
Yeah, it's going to stop eventually.
A way back.
It'll be over eventually.
Correct. It is going to be over with.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of knowing, okay, we need to put in 115 markers. We're doing 20 a year. So it's a five-year deal. If it's in the five years, there's no more markers to put in.
Right, exactly.
So it's one of those deals where, to eliminate this hassle, make it where it can just move along, so in 15 years, we're not still sitting here, whoever's here saying, "Hey, we still got 50 markers to put in." It's ridiculous.
I think once we get it started, it's going to continue to move.
Okay.
And we can also increase our budget to this board. I mean, I think that can be definitely had, so.
So can we vote to agree with the person that comes in at 12.5 or 23 markers?
If someone comes in, can we agree?
So that you can be authorized to just.
To do that.
Move forward?
Yeah, I don't think we actually need the board's vote, and that's kind of what I was saying at the beginning. It's like, I brought this to us, but I hadn't heard from the administrator yet, and he said, because of those two things, it's a town appropriate, town meeting appropriation, and a publicly set the roadway, I don't actually need the planning board's vote. He will just decide based on whichever estimate gives us the most balance at this point.
Okay, we just want to stay on top of it, though.
Yeah, we will.
If we're not making the vote, we don't know if he's agreed to anything.
I'll definitely keep you guys informed.
And also, we're the ones that will be deciding which ones are being done, right? Okay.
Unless he wants to, he could, maybe, if he wants a street done, that we don't, before others.
All I know is it's Preservation Park right now. I got those 28, that's my focus.
All right.
Awesome.
All right.
Okay.
I have some minor updates for ongoing development, if you want me to just run down the list, Madam Chair?
Yeah, can I just ask?
Sure.
Who is on 38 Wallace Street? Do you have a question or concern? Do you know who that is?
Nope.
Okay, all right. I don't, I don't see them on the list for anything. Okay.
Is that the accessory apartment decision?
I don't think so.
No, that's not it.
Yeah, if you would like to just.
I'll just go down the list. ASD, Wollam Lake Solar, they're targeting 526 for a final response, for finally a response to our, to Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering.
Okay.
His review. The target is 526, so next meeting.
All right.
I informed the neighborhood over there about that as well. That's why they're not on the meeting. Let's see. I noticed that another house is up for sale on White and Reservoir Estates, so they're moving along.
Good.
They're maintaining the catch basins?
I sure hope so. Would you like me to go check?
I'll do it tomorrow.
Mike's the catch basin expert. He's the detective.
Sorry, Gilboa Court Extension, the bond was set up, so we're getting ready to issue a law releases on that, that the board signed, we're still holding it until the bond is secure. That's it for updates on these, actually.
Okay, all right, I'd like to hold on the meeting minutes till everyone's here.
I do have one other request, but we have that a decision to sign.
Yeah, that's going around.
Okay, the only other request I had was, I had a request from a couple of different parties, private parties, future applicants and current applicants, if the board would consider holding a meeting on June 9th.
I would say.
One of those requests is based on whether or not CRG actually gets to close them, or gets a vote on the 26th or not, and if we do not, perhaps holding a meeting on the 9th, but I wouldn't want to wait until the 26th to make that decision.
Yeah.
Because.
Decision with the full board.
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Okay.
If we could prepare the decision for CRG, I think that would make it more comfy.
Yep, we're already starting that.
So if we see in black and white all of those conditions with, that are of our concerns, I don't, I don't think that there's, and then if any consultants are on. It seems like they're agreeable to everything that has been requested of them, and then it would be a formality, if the conditions are in place in the decision, and maybe there's just like a couple little things, I think we'll be good with that, I'll speak for myself.
Right, and all I want to say to the chair is, we made a decision on this board before that we will not close the public hearing till the applicant has reviewed the decision.
Oh, yeah.
Everything, because it's happened before where the meeting's been closed, and something's come up, and has to start kind of all over again, which isn't fair to anybody.
Rest assured, that will not happen on my watch.
Okay, I'm just saying, so it's a situation where when the full board is here, or something comes up, and say they do need to have, say something really comes up, and we have to have one meeting, I'm game, but as do the rest of the members that have to decide. But I think we can have it all handled.
I hope to have the decision ready between all parties next week, off the town council for their review.
Yes, yeah.
Want to have all that.
Especially with the information given.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, that is all I have for tonight.
Okay, great.
So, on this ANR.
Yeah.
Which is before us, I'm.
It's an accessory apartment.
Access, that's what I meant, accessory apartment, so it looks like that there is a builder involved.
We already voted on that.
Yeah, so we're just going to, what am I doing?
You just need to sign it.
That's it.
Next to your name.
Right, I thought I saw Shane structures there twice.
What time did you get up?
No, but it says relationship to owner, there's no relationship here, you know, it doesn't say, usually you're supposed to, it's part of the condition.
Yeah, you'll see, it's further in, it's in the condition, I had to explain what the relationship is, I mean, since there's a builder involved.
Right.
It's pending sale to an owner whose daughter will then be occupying the accessory apartment.
Yeah.
And it's written out in the condition.
It should, yeah, have said, yeah, all right.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I got one thing, through the chair.
Yes.